Good afternoon, everyone. It is Wednesday, June 21st, the first day of summer 2017. Before we begin our council meeting, I'd like to begin on the Pledge of Allegiance, if you are able to stand. I invite you to do that, and please join us. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And now, to begin our meeting, may I please have a roll call?
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Randy Funker.
Here.
Brad Hen.
Here.
Greg Gils.
Here.
Awesome. And then, first on our agenda is public comments. Before we have that one, I want to make sure if there's any others. There are none, so Kurt, come on up during public comments. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. First of all, a lot of people in the room today, as you can take notice. So, I just want to do an introduction. We have some members of Deluxe Feeds and Kent Nutrition Group with us today. I just wanted to just introduce them, if you would. If you just wanted to just do a little raise your hand, I'd appreciate it. Dan Passa, who is the Vice President of Midwest Sales with Kent Nutrition Group and the General Manager of Deluxe here in Sheldon. Mark Dunsmore. Mark? Mark is the Vice President and Controller of Kent Nutrition Group. Rick Reifert. Rick is Central Region Director of Operations with Kent Nutrition. Rob Andriga. Rob is the CFO of Deluxe Feeds here in Sheldon. Dusty Doppenberg is with procurement with Deluxe Feeds here in Sheldon. Molly Nitzel, Financial Analyst with Kent Feeds and Deluxe. And then, John Schroeder, who is the Plant Manager of Kent Nutrition up in Sioux City. So, I want to welcome you guys all here today, and appreciate you guys making the trip up here. So, with that, there's a reason why we're making all those announcements up front. We'd like to just announce, we're extremely excited to announce plans by Deluxe Feeds and the Kent Nutrition Group for a major expansion project here in Sheldon that'll create many high-quality jobs, as well as expand their current footprint and total operation capacity. This expansion will provide Deluxe Feeds with new innovations and products that will bring value to the Deluxe Feeds and Kent Nutrition Group customers in this market. The plan will increase capacity and versatility by adding five new pellet mills, two separate processing lines, high-efficiency packaging equipment, robotic pelletizers, grain cleaning and packaging innovations, and a 50,000-square-foot warehouse. This expansion will also allow the plant to better serve customers and offer a wider variety of products and services. This expansion project includes over $37 million of total investment, which of that investment includes $10.5 million of new taxable valuation for the city of Sheldon, which will generate approximately $330,750 per year. This project is also proposed to create up to 15 new jobs, many of which will be high-quality jobs, adding to their current employee base of 33. The project is expected to take 18 to 20 months to complete, and a groundbreaking ceremony will be held later in 2017 to celebrate the project. To help facilitate the project to happen here in Sheldon, the city is taking steps to award Deluxe Feeds and Kent Nutrition Group a full five-year tax rebate for the expansion project. With that, if there's any questions on the project, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think it would be more advantageous for us to invite Dan Passa, who's the Vice President of Midwest Sales and with Kent Nutrition Group and the General Manager of Deluxe here in Sheldon. Dan?
Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Council? On behalf of Deluxe Feeds and the Kent Nutrition Group, I'd like to express our sheer excitement in announcing the expansion of our feed manufacturing facilities to the city of Sheldon, to our employees, to surrounding Kent Nutrition Group dealers, and most importantly, to all the livestock producers. This new plant will benefit in the northwest Iowa and surrounding areas. This expansion is the fourth such one to our Sheldon site since 2003, and is an extension and continuation to what the Doppenberg family started. This project is our ongoing commitment to supplying this key area of livestock production with high-quality products and services, which will allow livestock producers to function efficiently and profitably for years to come. We would sincerely like to thank the city of Sheldon for the help and financial consideration of this project, and we look forward to our working relationship with all city officials as we grow our presence in the area, bringing in more jobs and more funding.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's exciting news, and it's thank you all, this whole group of you all coming up and being a part of this brief announcement, but we're looking forward to more days of meeting with you and getting to know you and watching this great growth take place in our city. So, thank each and every one of you and those others in your business for the commitment you're making to our city. We appreciate and we thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Kind of got goosebumps. So, great. Now, on to other business. Any other public comments before I move on? Great. Okay. Thank you all again. And you're welcome to hang out this whole time, but if you have places to go, I hear there's a barbecue. Have some for us.
Really?
Out here, Pete. Wait, there's food? Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
It's exciting. Next on our consent agenda, I want to point one thing out before you at your desk when you came up today. There is an additional claim that Angie would like specifically pointed out, so I'm going to read it real quick. The SCDC 4%.
Sorry. I was trying to...
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry, not the SCDC.
The additional claim of the approval to pay fiscal year-end claims if necessary and if their budget is, if she can have that approval, and that would be part of the consent agenda.
It would be part of, you don't need a separate motion?
No.
Okay.
So, any questions regarding the consideration of requests for the Sanford Glow Race, the SCDC various events? If not, do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. Last request for any comments. I'll take a roll call, please.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Awesome. Then, moving into our new business, the first item, number three, is opening the public hearing. That is now open, and this is in consideration of proposals on the Sheldon Municipal Airport snow-removal equipment. At this time, we'll see if there's any public comments, then we'll close it and invite Andy and Andrew up to have any discussion. So, of those that are public, any comments? There are none. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So move. Support.
Thank you. And a roll call to close.
Hamel?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Funker?
Hi.
Thank you. And then, Andy and Andrew. Andy is only in, or both? I didn't know.
Two Andys.
Two Andys. They're making it easy on us.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and Council, yeah.
And Andy McClure, you're with McClure.
Yeah. Andy Mason with McClure Engineering Company. I'm our aviation team leader, and this is Andrew Maurer, Project Engineer with us. So, we were tasked with assisting with the acquisition of some snow-removal equipment for the airport. We did open bids late this morning. We received one bid from Fox International out of Spencer. You should have a copy of that bid tab that I wanted to just highlight some items on that. So, what we did is we did a base bid for a truck-type carrier vehicle, and then we did five alternates, basically some accessory-type equipment that the airport has stated that they would like to see as a bid alternate. So, as you can see in here, our total, our engineer's estimate was $325,000. The bids came in just under that, about $318,871. With that, the FAA's grant application is due on Friday, so we'd like to have the council, airport and council, make the decision today on how many alternates you guys would like to award, if any, and submit the grant application for federal funding assistance by Friday. So, as you can, if you want to go into all the details on all the alternates, you know, the bid alternate one was for, Andy, why don't you step in?
Yeah, absolutely. So, for this, you almost had two packages, where for the first one, you've got your truck-type carrier vehicle. It's going to have two attachments with that, the first of which is that power-angle reversible plow, which will go on the front of that truck. Secondly, you've got your steel dump body that would go on the backside. And then, what we tried to do, the airport has had trouble tossing snow over its existing light fixtures, so to try to alleviate those issues, what we've done is we've retrofitted their current payloader. It's a 1978 John Deere 544B model with this rotary snow blower, which is your bid alternate three, your box plow, which I know Lyle and Kerry and these guys can touch on more, but that's for maneuverability, if I can say the word. It really would help them out, I think, from a time standpoint. It just helps them get the job done in a much more efficient manner. So, that would be your bid alternate four, which again, would go on that retrofitted payloader. And then, bid alternate five, we're calling that out as a loader-cupler system, which basically, so right now, they have a bucket on the front of this payloader, and to make sure that the airport doesn't lose the ability to use that bucket, you've got to retrofit this thing with these quick-attached components, and that's essentially what this is doing. It's just making sure that the airport's able to quickly and easily put this snow blower, this box plow, and their existing bucket on this retrofitted payloader.
Okay.
So, that's kind of the general synopsis there. If you guys have specific questions, we can dive into those.
What's our match on this?
Yeah, the FAA will participate in 90% of that. There is a separate funding schedule sheet there. Originally, the city council approved $425,000 total cost. 10% would be borne by the city, or 42,500 was programmed. As you can see, the bids came in, like we said, a little lower than that, so the local match is 10% of 354,000 is 35,000, which is over $400.
Great.
This is the only bid?
This is the only bid, yeah. You want to just touch on that?
Yeah, absolutely. So, this one was a bit unique, since it was snow-removal equipment. Typically, on a construction project, you'd have a prime bidder, and they would go out and get their subs. In this case, you've got these different equipment manufacturers that have territories, if you will, and I think these guys are, they're very hesitant to step on each other's feet. So, I think that's one point to make. Secondly, you've got, just in our single bid, you've got six separate manufacturers or suppliers.
Sure.
That had to come together to put together this bid package. So, I know it looks like it's a single bid, but really, you've got a lot of guys, it's a conglomeration almost.
Okay.
We did a wide solicitation across the board to other, you know, not just an international company, we advertised email distribution, so yeah.
Sure.
I think you had a lot of guys that weren't willing to put together a complete bid package on this, which is something that we required. They'd rather just bid their component and call that good, whereas, you know, obviously, international was willing to do it.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think those components led to why you only had one bid.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. I wasn't overlooking, because it's such fine print, and I do have bifocals, but just needed to make sure. No, it's all good. I just wanted to make sure. Council, is any questions for Andy and Andrew? Andy and Andy, is that okay?
Yeah, we call them Ringo.
Ringo, okay. Andy and Ringo.
Yeah, that's perfect.
Place is pretty straightforward.
It is.
And we're within the engineer's bus.
So, we were expecting like 4:25, and this is coming in at 3:18. Is that what I'm?
3:54.
3:54.
Including our...
Oh, okay. Yes, yes, yes. Got you. The engineer's estimate, your cost, okay.
For advertising, yes.
Great. Who's operating this out of the airport? Lyle? And comfortable? Any comments that you'd like to share?
Fox, you like?
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Lyle Vuss, so we have Midwest Flying Service, and we have the contract to manage the airport. So, as most of you know, we've had a lot of older equipment for many years in the FAA as these, as we've been in business for 25 years, and there was no federal funding for any of this originally. And so, as the years have progressed, we've been fortunate enough and committed enough federal dollars that we're finally able to see that money come back. And we, this was basically Plan C for us, because what we originally wanted didn't meet the 60% requirement by the FAA, so we put together what we thought was the best product for the dollars that we could get, and fortunately, it came in under what we originally all thought. And so, we're pretty pleased with what we are going to get. It's not exactly what we requested originally, but, you know, you can only do what the FAA is going to approve, and so this was...
True, yeah.
Communicating with McClure Engineering and other operators and talking to people that have equipment, so it's really basically the best equipment we could get for what they were going to lock, so.
Okay.
So, you're comfortable with all the equipment in this?
Yeah, the only issue we all have, and there ain't much we can do about it, is our payloader's fairly old, but the good thing is, all this is quick-attached equipment, so if they'd ever replace it, or we ever replace a payloader, we still have the blower, the box, and the bucket, or vice versa.
Well, that's nice. So, that's detachment, okay.
Yeah, and the problem was, we couldn't get a payloader funded, because none of them are 60%, or nobody would give the information because of proprietary information, so this is really kind of where we're at.
Plus, I asked them to match a quick attach, same style as what we use at the street park.
Okay, so if that breaks down...
Therefore, if we have to interconnect, we should have that possibility.
Good thinking.
So, some could break, then their payloader, whatever, could come and hook on.
Good. Glad, okay, that's glad to hear that. Thank you. All right, thanks, Lyle.
I would entertain the motion to accept the full bid.
Support.
Okay, any other comments? Did we need to share anything further? Any comments? Okay, awesome. Thank you, Andy. Andy, thank you, Lyle. Thank you, everybody, for putting in the work on that, Todd and Sean. Since there's no further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Funker?
Hi.
Sawyer?
Hi.
Ken?
Hi.
Hamel?
Hi.
Thank you. Andy and Andy, you're welcome to stay the whole time, but, and the bus, I think the bus have an outing to go to as well. Everybody's leaving us. Golfing, barbecue?
Soccer.
All right, we'll be right there.
It's right.
It is. That's wonderful. Good luck to you. Thank you so much. Now, number four in the new business is, we're going to have a discussion regarding the electrical distribution within and adjacent to the Crossroads Pavilion with RDG. We have some good things to share. We're all right. So, who wants to start? Todd, or Sean, or both, or how, or what?
Well, Todd will go into some detail.
Okay.
Essentially, there's been, there was an issue that was brought to the city's attention a month and a half or so ago, when the engineers made us aware of the fact that a technical rider that was presented to the city for a regional music group, that we would not meet the needs, excuse me, of that particular group with our current distribution system. We have adequate electrical within the facility, but it's just getting it to different parts of the facility to actually make it accommodate different acts that would come as a venue here. We met with the electrical engineer and developed a number of different options. Those options were presented to the Event Center Board last week. The Event Center Board chose Options 1 and Options 7, and Todd can go into a little more detail. We have a price that was provided to us later this afternoon as well, and we can go into that, but if you want to explain the distribution?
Sure, sure. So, what the Pavilion Board is recommending, and I'm not going to go through all the options that were presented to them unless you want me to at that point, but what they're currently recommending is putting a 100-amp service with a 60-amp receptacle in the kitchen on this, in this northwest corner behind the door. Thought process is, that gives us 100-amp service and 60-amp service on this end of the building. If you have an event here, you simply come through the door, or come through this doorway here. Then, they wanted power in more places than one, and there were several options there. So, the second choice that they are recommending is actually putting a monument, we have leftover stone from when we did the exterior of the building, so building a stone monument with electrical enclosure inside of it off the southwest side of the building. We currently already have an empty conduit running out the building over here for future expansion, so then they would run 200-amp service through that, around the patio, and get it to this monument. Within that 200-amp, or within that monument, we would have 200-amp service that could be cut down to 100. There would be 60-amp receptacles in there, and there would be 110, 20-amp receptacles in there, so a multi-purpose type facility. The thought process behind the monument is that that also gives us the ability to have power out in the 10-acre green space that we have to the west of the building. So, how does that solve our problem of getting power inside? The idea is to core this wall, this west wall, just south of the boardroom, and cap the ends. So, if you need large-service power in this area of the building, you then run a cord essentially from your monument located here, under this overhang and through. You can then get power to here, to the boardroom at a high level, or if you absolutely had to, you could run the cord right along this wall and still do your center stage setup. So, the Pavilion Board thought that that was the two or three options essentially that give them the most bang for their buck and flexibility of use. Costs associated with those, so to put the power into the kitchen, again, that's 100-amp and a 60-amp receptacle, would be a grand total price of $8,400. To get the monument power out here southwest of the building, $25,190. And to core the wall and cap the ends, $1,200 for a grand total of $34,790. That should include all costs, except for some minor incidentals like reseating the grass, a little repair, which we've got some of that to do anyway, so it could be thrown in at that time if this option is selected and approved.
And what we're asking is, as staff, at this point in time, so we can keep the project moving forward, is that you would give us authority to pursue the project with an amount not to exceed $34,790. The issue of who is paying for what is certainly something that the council and the engineering firm will be dealing and discussing, but we want to make sure that we are meeting the opening date, and we want to move forward with the project. So, there's time to make sure that the proper parties are paying for it, but we want to continue on, so we meet that September 1 deadline.
Given a green light tomorrow, you're looking at several weeks before completion, just because of lead times on some of the components.
It's about a four-week period to get that 4x4 electrical panel.
Now, the, from the monument into the building, is that, is those cords included in this price?
Corning this wall...
No, not coring, cords.
No.
Start pricing cords.
Yeah, it's going to be expensive.
It's going to be expensive. I think that should be in there.
Yeah, how many feet is that? I think so, too.
We need to look at that, but there's also a possibility that we might be able to acquire some that was...
I think we need to know that number, too. The other thing with cords, you got a trip hazard outside. You have a dark venue at night? You got a trip hazard.
Yeah, so the idea, and that was discussed at the Pavilion Board meeting, Brad, and their thought was, is if you put it off the southwest corner, there was a proposal to put it like over here and over here, and you'd have here, but the thought was, is to get it to where you could still have use of indoor and still have use of this patio. The only area you would have to block off then is this small corner behind the boardroom, and this is an exit that likely will not be used for events, so you could...
You have the patio, they'll be out on the patio.
Yeah, but the patio is, if the patio is here...
Yep, so the patio's there.
The patio is here, you're coming in over here.
And that's something we can...
Will they be laid through the lawn, then?
Yeah, but the, yes, they will be in the lawn.
The cord that they plug in to run into the building...
That is correct.
Will be laid on the lawn up to that point, and then to the sidewalk and into the building.
That is correct. The exact location of the monument, like, we haven't selected yet. What the Pavilion Board instructed was, if we get approval by a council, is to get it southwest, get it out of the sightlines between the windows and the water, but yet in a location that's functional to get into the building if we need to and service outdoor events. If it wasn't for the desire to service outdoor events, I think they would be looking at another scenario, but they had a huge desire and were excited to think of, well, now we could host an outdoor concert of sizeability, and we're set up for it. So, that's why we got where we could. There was an option, Brad, to put indoor power right here.
That wouldn't work.
It would work.
Yeah, but not with cords through the building.
No, it could work. You could put it on this wall, too. You could also put 60-amp receptacle over here, but not to 100, because it won't physically fit. The original proposal had power here, 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 and/or here, and there's advantages and disadvantages to all of them.
The original?
No, the proposals that the Pavilion Board looked at.
Okay. Also, I think something we can consider is, when you see the outdoor events with the big electrical cords, we can look at maybe those mats, too, that go in and cover to help with the trip hazard. But I think, I think what we need to do right now is consider this and approve it so we can work on that, and then start looking into the cords, but also, what can we do to safeguard from that trip hazard of cords being open?
On the cord discussion, I would highly assume any event or promotional show, whatever, they will more than likely have their power source cords with them.
I would agree with that, Zach. The one thing I think we will need to find out is how much.
Right.
You know, what, because we're not, it's not like they're going to, if it's an indoor event, it's not like they can park right by it. I mean, that monument is going to have to be a little ways off the building, just so it doesn't clash.
Yep, but will they have enough cord?
Well, that's why we might have to own one.
That's why I think they should be in this number.
So, in, so...
Because you start pricing copper cord, wire, electrical cord?
Mm-hmm. Just regular is not cheap.
To give you an idea of the monument, it would look something like that, so it would attempt to match the building.
Okay.
With the used over...
So, not just some tower of bricks?
No.
To mask? Okay, thank you.
And the other thing I'd like to know, what, some of the other party responsibilities are going to be?
And I think...
Because it seems like, from what I'm hearing, is we're just kind of going around in circles, we're chasing each other. Nobody wants to commit to nothing. Nobody wants to accept blame.
I think, Brad, and this is what I'm hoping, from reading that last email, when we make a decision on what this is going to cost to do, now we have this option before us, and we have the cost, now we can have them here and go after them as to how they are going to step up to help rectify the situation that was caused on their negligence.
And I thought he was supposed to be here tonight.
He was. I sent the...
To me, they're circling the drain and not wanting to show up.
We'll have our...
I'm calling it ace and ace.
Yep.
This is what I'm getting, looking at a council side. We've getting the runaround, the runaround, the runaround. That's what I have to say about this. I'm done.
Well, no, we're not done, because when they, when we have them in our audience...
I'm done venting.
Right.
So, I don't agree with this.
Save it, save it for when they're here, so that we, we all are on the same boat.
I think they need to be at that podium.
Yes, yes.
They've told us they were going to be here, and they're always a no-show. They said they were going to be at your Pavilion Meeting, they don't show up.
We did a teleconference with them.
We did, we did have a conference with them the afternoon prior to the Pavilion Board, but with others, the contractor and others as well. Board, but with others, the contractor and others as well. But the purpose of that meeting was not to discuss cost sharing, it was to discuss, we have a problem, what's the best, what's the best solution?
And now, now that we know that this is, if this is the option the Board is recommending, and if this is the option the council approves, then we have a price on it, that now we can go after what that agreement could be from them.
By saying we agree in paying X amount of dollars or whatever, does that in any way hurt our leverage?
Our budget?
Absolutely. No, our leverage.
Oh, our leverage, by saying we're gonna do this?
Because we agreed that we'll pay for it.
So there, there's a portion of the contract for mediation if, if there's a dispute between the owner and, and the engineering firm. If you want to wait until there's resolution through there, we're certainly going to be delaying the opening date, potentially.
Right. And I think they...
Well, you'd be delaying opening for large-ticket events.
Right.
But we're ahead of the game.
Right. Yes and no. We have, we're booking.
Time's going away quickly.
Brittany, are we booking September dates?
Yes.
But I think we were supposed to be open until October.
Now, September 1.
The original, when we first started, thought the end of the bid was...
Also, the contract is due to be complete by September. It's...
September 1?
It's, yeah, it's July, or it's June 21, and they're 99.57% done.
Yeah, could it affect our leverage with them? Sure. But can it hold us back? Sure. I mean, yeah, we may not have big venues right away, but do we want to stop in the middle of things that might be happening? Will that interrupt service and having that facility open? I don't know. Have we had conversations with them, or is it, have you spoke with them, or?
I've had one conversation with him on the phone and numerous emails, and those were shared with both the City Council as well as the Event Center Board.
I think phone calls need to be continued, not, you know, if that can help to press them with the phone calls to get them, so we can have their audience.
Tell us good to talk to people on paper.
I know the...
I think it's good to talk and get them on the phone, get them in person, too, maybe both.
They need to be here.
They need to be here.
I'm with Brad on that. They need to be here.
They've got to be here. So, okay, and I'm not, we're all on the same page, so let's not keep beating up that dead horse. We all agree that we need RGG's presence, but in the meantime, are we willing to wait on this option until we have their attention to see what they're going to do, or can we move forward with this and go after them then?
I think you need to have the price of cords also in this bid.
$3,000, $5,000, $2,000. It's not, it's not...
Yeah.
It's gonna be peanut, Brad, they ran, they ran power cord from here, because one of the options was to put a, put a monument in this area. The subcontractor, the electrical contractor, said, if you take that monument and you move it all the way over here, I'll add all that underground cord and conduit for $2,700. So that's gotta be a worst-case scenario.
But that's building wire. This would be rubber extension cord. Somewhat difference in price.
Yeah, but it's gonna be...
Okay, that's fine.
A 200-amp cord's gonna be that big around.
Here's my question, real quick, and I don't know if this will entertain me, these people, because I'm not savvy on power. Okay. Let's say this was in the original plan and we had that...
This would have never been in the original plan.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to worry about these cords if that were in the original plan?
I'm saying a 200-amp service would highly unlikely have ever been in the original plan.
Okay.
200-amp service is what Rice Fest runs off of.
Right. Mm-hmm. Okay, I just, you know, because I look at it this way, we have the power, that's not the question. So when people say that we don't have the power out there, you're wrong. We have the power, it's just not appropriate power.
Power's in the building, it's not distributed.
Exactly. So regardless, if we would've done it this way, we still would've had to pay for cost of materials, and that's something that we have to look at with them. We're gonna pay, we would've paid that regardless. So it's gonna be more of the labor, the cost to rip things, to redo things.
In the planning stages, we talked about small venues and concerts and Belgian waffle suppers. He was aware those functions were gonna happen in the planning meetings. We're not engineers to make sure that that's always in the plan. He's the one who knew our intentions, should've had it in the plan.
Oh, I agree. What I'm saying is the cost of material.
So I, there are some differences in cost of materials, so yes.
That's what I'm saying. So what is beyond that, is where we need to...
We don't know.
Right.
And if we agree to this, they can inflate the numbers.
They agree, okay.
Well, I mean...
Define and inflate the numbers.
Right, because we have, we have the bid right here.
Okay.
No, when...
Take it back. I...
Okay.
These, these numbers were given to me by the general contractor and his subcontractor, not RGG.
Okay.
RGG has zero input on, on these.
I didn't know if they're engineer estimate or not.
No, 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 no. These, these are hard cost bids from the contractor and the subcontractor.
And do we, do we have a breakdown of what it is, material versus labor?
I have a breakdown of what it is, general contractor versus subcontractor.
Okay.
So, for instance, in the kitchen, to get the power to the kitchen, electrical-wise, it's $6,480. It's an extra $1,920 from the general contractor, Pugendorf, because they gotta tear the wall open for Notaboom Electric to put the stuff in, and they gotta put the wall back.
Okay.
So you could certainly argue that the $1,920 is extra, because had it been in the plans and specs in the beginning...
Sure.
They would've installed the equipment while the wall was open. That's certainly an extra cost.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
So, and that's what I'm looking at. When we go, when we have this discussion with RGG, that's...
If you so choose, you can argue that getting the conduit across the hallway is more difficult now because of the fire sprinkler system and the, and the ductwork, so maybe there's some extra costs there. I don't know what that breakdown is, that's not broken out in here, but it's not gonna be $6,000. Might be $300, $500.
The other argument would be, because there is not the 60-amp, 220 service on the other side of the building, it's coming in through the monument, that we could certainly make an argument that a portion of that should be covered as well.
Sure.
Because it was distributed on that side of the building.
Will there be room for expansion in that conduit yet if we wanna do something farther to the pond?
Not, not in this conduit.
Okay.
Because this, this conduit that we ran...
The existing conduit is what we...
Is two-inch, and it takes a two-inch conduit to get a 200-amp service through it. But you could, once you have the monument here, you could then come back out of it and continue on someplace.
That's why we went that way, is to give us that flexibility.
Good idea. That's good. Okay, so, thank you so much.
Yeah.
Is this something that you want to make a motion on so we can continue to move forward? And then we go after RGG? Obviously, we want to have the, I shouldn't say go after them. We want to have the discussion with them, and we will have that discussion with them.
Soon.
Very soon. So, to not hold up progress on what this could take to be done, is anyone willing to make a motion? Now, what Sean had asked was for the Board to have the authority not to exceed $34,790.
We'll verify what those cord costs are and have that included in there as well.
As long as you have that by the time you're having discussion with RGG, are you okay?
Yeah.
I would say so.
Right. I would think so, too, as long as...
I don't think, unless I'm wrong, I don't think the cord cost is gonna make your decision on whether or not you choose the monument power, is it?
No, because we're gonna end up having to have them eventually, so...
Possibly, yeah.
Eventually, you can get them down the road.
Okay.
The huge advantage of the monument power is you're now servicing the outdoor as well, which was not, not always the thought, but it maybe presents itself now as a good thing.
I think it's a very positive possibility.
A good thing is come out of something unfortunate, right? Okay. Is anybody wanting to make a motion? Otherwise, we're gonna move on. I don't want to be here all night. Yes, no? Further discussion, questions? What are you hesitating on? Thoughts?
At what point do we need this?
We had, we had one potential booking that required 100-amp service.
Okay, when?
That would've been in December.
In December?
Would have been, or is it still on the date?
Would have been. We lost, we lost that booking.
It's possible.
What is the, what's left in the contingency fund?
We have, so, including the costs, the electrical upgrade, there, there's probably going to be a minimum of $9,000 coming in additional change orders. So if you add all of that up, and you consider our entire pledge donation list, we have a remaining balance of $463,565.
Under budget? In contingency?
In contingencies. That's coming in, coming in over a five-year period.
But in the next, in the construction contingency, nothing's left?
We've added, we've added different change orders and so forth.
Because I thought we started with like, we had an extra 160-some thousand? Is that going?
There was about 180,000. When you look at the change orders that, that are before you, gives that amount, it, it shows a reduction, and then the addition, and I think we're...
We're currently at about a $5,000 reduction under contract.
Under contract.
You still have money beyond that, under contract, but to Sean's point, there's some outstanding change orders that you guys are gonna see that will likely take us slightly over contract.
But when you look at the whole picture of all of it, we're still to the good 465, 463,000.
And they're two months ahead of schedule.
It's something we, something we need to do, but yet, on the other hand, we have the engineering thing. I think we need to move it forward. I don't, it's something we need to have.
Yes, we do.
We've got a great building, we need to get it done. We'll argue and argue over the other things.
We'll get our time with them. We will.
We need to have it. We got the constructions on site. I'd make the motion to...
I would support that.
To do it.
Okay. Can I verify your motion? Is that to approve the Board to not to exceed $34,790?
Not to exceed.
Thank you.
Because we need to keep the project moving. Nangle with the engineers later.
Okay. Any other comments, gentlemen?
Now we know our number, get them here.
Yep. All right. May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we are on number five. The resolution setting dates of the consultation in a public hearing and proposed Amendment Number Four to the amended and restated Sheldon Urban Renewal Plan in the city of Sheldon, state of, what is that date? I do not have that written down.
Next Thursday at 1:00 p.m.
June 29, 1:00 p.m., correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I, I know, I had it written on my other one, and I shredded that. Okay, so we are setting June 29, 2017, at 1:00 p.m. Dates of a consultation in a public hearing on proposed Amendment Number Four to the amended and restated Urban Renewal Plan. Do we have a motion to approve this date and time?
So move.
Support.
Thank you. Do you have any questions? May I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Thank you. Number six, considering the second reading of the ordinance of fireworks. And before we get into that second reading, and, and I want, I want to share, I think we all received an email from someone, there is going to be consideration and concern over the age of people setting off fireworks. There's also gonna be the confusion of when they can and when they can't. We're gonna do our best to publicize, or to announce, you know, when it is legal to shoot them off in our town. Accidents do and will happen, whether they're legal or not, but we did receive an email from, I just want to make this public. Pat Van Horsen, letting us know she is concerned about the shooting off and lighting and the safety of small children. I'm also concerned in the debris that it leaves all over, but unfortunately, whether, setting off, whether we legalize and allow it in our city or not, it's gonna happen because the sale is allowable in the state, right? Right. So unfortunately, some accidents are things that happen. All we can do is advise caution parental, you know, I think a lot of that is families, if you are not watching your kids and you're just misbehaving, we're gonna have things happen.
Isn't that age mandated by, or set by state law?
It is. Mm-hmm. So I, I thank you that, you know, Pat sent the email out to share her concerns, her, his, her concerns with us. I appreciate that. Fireworks are happening right now, even though we haven't passed anything. So there's some, there may be some confusion on our part, you, you know, you can buy them on these dates, but we're only gonna allow you to set them off on this, and I, I don't know if Lyle's having a hard time with that right now or not, but I think we just need to stick to our guns of the first reading. Let's see what happens this year, because it's something we can always amend in the future. Now, taking into consideration, we're on the second reading of this ordinance for fireworks. If we pass this and allow it to go to a third, that third reading would take place July 5. It would not be published until that Saturday in the review, which is then after the date that we would even allow fireworks to be set off in this town. So if we choose, we can waive the second, go to a third, approve that. It would then be published in the papers by Saturday, which would then actually make it legal to shoot off fireworks in the city of Sheldon until the 5th of July. So, council, thoughts on the second passing, maybe going to a third, or are there any other comments that you'd like to share that you have heard from our residents?
I guess it's, it's unfortunate that we have to deal with this, but it's been handed us by the state, and so we have to deal with it.
Thank you. Yep, and we're doing our best.
It's one of those things. I think that we ought to move ahead with it as quickly as we can, and waive the third reading and get on with it, and then we'll, I have a feeling there's gonna be a lot more discussion around the state the next year or so.
Absolutely. And then we can revisit it.
It was kind of rapid-fire to get everything ready for this season.
Mm-hmm. It was. We were put under the gun, but I think we'll be okay. So Pete, then, Brad, do you have any, I don't want to, Randy, anything?
No.
Does anybody want to make a motion? Do we, I just want to make sure I don't skip over you. Do we want to make it, does, Pete, would you like to make that a motion, then?
But to clarify, I got one thing.
Yeah. You do this every time.
To clarify, though, state mandate, it was 18 years old to purchase fireworks, correct?
Purchase, yes, yes.
And that's what we've done.
To make the purchase. So if an adult is purchasing them and allowing a child to let them off?
Yep.
Shame on that adult, and that's where...
I just wanted clarification on that.
Yep.
I move that we approve the second reading. Does, do I have to waive the third in the same motion?
Mm-hmm.
I move that we approve the second reading and waive the third reading, so that we can get on with this.
Is there a second?
Support.
Thank you. Do you have any further discussion? So with this motion said, and may I have a roll call?
Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Now, this will be published Saturday, so it'll actually be legal in the city of Sheldon come Saturday. That fireworks may be set off, but only until 10:00 p.m., am I correct? I don't want to have to read all that.
Whatever it says.
10:00 p.m.?
I believe it's 10:00 p.m.
10:00 p.m. July 4th is midnight. Okay. Thank you very much, gentlemen. That's hot in the presses. You guys might want to run down and get that going. I'm just kidding. Okay, number seven is the consideration of the third reading of the water sewer rates. I have not received any comments on this at all. So do we, do you have any discussion, questions, comments? If not, do we have a motion to approve the third reading of the water sewer rates?
So move.
Support.
You guys are awesome. If there are no questions, comments, may I have a roll call, please?
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you. Number eight on our agenda is considering pay estimate number 11 on the Crossroads Pavilion. That is in the amount of $224,437, $224,430.87.
Make the motion to pay?
Sure. To approve the pay, okay, thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Awesome. Questions, comments, anything on that payment for the Crossroads Pavilion? Roll call, please.
Kent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Thank you.
You can track, again, on, on the pay request, the, the original amount of the contract, the change orders, and, and it is down here, and we, we do have a, a balance of $5,746.24. We'll go over that amount with some change orders coming up.
Okay, all righty.
But that's on the contract, not the total.
Correct.
Yeah, but, right.
Okay, number nine, consider approval of wage for a water operator. Who wants to share that good news?
Sure.
Thanks, Todd.
As you know, we've been short a water operator. We have held our interviews, and we extended an offer to David Andriga. held our interviews and we extended an offer to David Andriga of $18.91 an hour, which is pay grade two, step five, so it's the midpoint of pay grade two. We feel like his previous experience makes him a good fit for our team, and he should be a good employee. So, what I'm looking for is approval of the wage.
Wonderful.
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. May I have a roll call, please?
Kent.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
I was gonna ask a question. Is he from town? Where did he come from or past history?
Yeah, he lives in town. He's been, he's been plumbing for a while, which I think has been official to the waterside. We've actually, he's done service work in town for a while, so.
The, the water superintendent has worked with him on, on different calls.
I don't, if I seen a face, I might know him.
Okay, thank you, Todd. And then number 10 is the possibility to go into closed session for the discussion of employee benefits. At this time, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Roll call. I just know you're ready. I'm sorry, Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Okay, just a moment. We'll go into closed session.
Unpause. All right.
Okay, coming out of closed session, no action is being taken. Moving on to number 11 on our agenda is going into closed session for the discussion on Union Pavilion, or Crossroads, excuse me, Crossroads Pavilion wages. Do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Somebody said nah.
Just do it.
Okay, we're live.
Hey, we're live. It's 5:45 in the City Council chambers. We have come out of our closed session again and no action is being taken. At this time, do we have any comments we'd like to share, council?
I got a question.
Yes.
For Todd.
Okay.
No, I just, I'm just curious on our wells. How are our wells doing?
So, prior, prior to these last rains, we, we had saw a reduction in well level and a reduction of pumpage. We're still okay because we have the deep wells. Obviously, Keith has not had a chance to recheck them now that we've received some rains the last few days here, so we'll continue to monitor. But our, our shallows were showing a reduction, but that's not uncommon for us in a summer.
Yeah.
Yep.
Good, so we're not where we were.
And the softness is coming down, or?
Right now, with the, with the, with the shallow wells reducing in, in production, the hardness is actually going up. Now, if we get some rain, you know, some more rains, and we get production being able to go back up, we'll try to bring it back down. But we're still probably producing around 48 to 50 grain water, which is hard.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions?
The solution is still Alan C.
Comments that we wanna share? Zach? No? Sean? Anne? Anybody? All right, then do we have a motion to adjourn?
Support.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Sawyer.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Funkert.
Aye.
Kent.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're adjourned.